Alrighty, um, call to order, roll call please.
Yes, we cannot hear you.
Pardon? Can you hear us again? Anne, can you hear us?
I can hear you, Chair Fredrickson, I just could not hear Liz.
Okay. Call to order, roll call, please.
Commissioner Cox? Commissioner McCoy? Commissioner Noble?
Here.
Commissioner Shores?
Here.
Sheriff Fredrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Goss?
Here.
Commissioner Keith? I see Commissioner Keith connected.
And we don't see her on our end.
She is connected, but I don't have the option to ask her to unmute. Let me see if I can reach out to her to get her audio working.
Take a pause here while we try to get a commission, get a hold of a commission member. We have a quorum, don't we, Anne?
Mute, got it.
I gave you a prompt?
Okay.
Okay, thanks, we're good.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Keith, this is roll call, are you present?
Yes, I was having a problem with my laptop.
Perfect, we have a-
Alright, thank you, Anne. Um, everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Allegiance stands.
And-
One nation, for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. It's nice to see everybody, it's been a, been a few months. Item number one, approval of minutes. A regular meeting minutes of July 14th, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I have a motion. I guess someone to second that?
I'll second it.
Okay.
I got a second. Any further discussion? I hear none? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none? Thank you. Item number two, consideration of public comments. Those wishing to address the planning and zoning commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time pursuant to ARS 38-431. Excuse me. Item A, virtual meeting, public comments may be submitted to the clerk's office. In-person attendance is suspended for this meeting due to the COVID-19 pandemic. This meeting will be held through technological means. Public comments must be submitted in writing by 9:00 AM on October 13th, 2020, by emailing cityclerk@cityofkingman.gov, or by dropping the comments off at the main city complex, located at 310 North Forest Street, Kingman, Arizona. Members of the public can watch or listen to the meeting live via Channel 4, or YouTube, at youtube.com/cityofkingman. Do we have any comments at all, Anne?
We did not receive any, sir.
Alright, Anne, thank you very much. Alright, item number three. A report on the 2020 Arizona State Planning Conference. The 2020 ATA Arizona State Planning Conference was held on September 9th through the 11th, 2020, virtually due to the COVID-19 pandemic. This report provides a brief synopsis of some of the sessions that we attended virtually. You gonna comment on that, Rich?
Turn the camera a little bit so you can see me. I really don't have any comments other than it was a, even though it was held virtually, it was still a good conference. You and I did attend several sessions virtually, and I think, you know, all of them have relevance to the things we're working on, in particular the read session, which was, is relevant as we were working on updating our sign code. So this is just open, if there's any discussion, we can, we can entertain that, otherwise we can just, we'll just present the report for your consideration.
Anybody have any questions or comments? I hear none. Alright, thank you, everybody, thank you, Richard. Item number four, new business. A work session for Kingman zoning ordinance update. Lisa Wise Consulting Incorporated, LWC, will provide a presentation to the Kingman Planning and Zoning Commission regarding the process, progress on the zoning ordinance update. LWC will provide an overview of the public review draft zoning code and next steps for the update process.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Just confirming sound check, you can hear me?
We can hear you.
Very good, thank you. Nice to be with you all again. I'm Roger Eastman, Director with Lisa Wise Consulting, and we have Adam Pesakovitz with us as well, one of our associates. Adam and I will share the presentation. And I would like to just also confirm that you can see my screen. It should have "update Kingman zoning code" on it.
Yep, I can see it.
Very good. Alrighty, so it really is a pleasure to be with you. It's been a while since we last spent time with the planning commission. We've spent a lot of time with your staff over the last few months, getting the public review draft completed and available, available for public comment. And we're here this evening to just give you all a quick recap of who we are as a consulting firm. We'll go back and just remind you and anybody else who's watching the presentation about why we're doing the zoning ordinance update. And then between Adam and I, we'll talk about the public review draft, and this has to be at a high level. We will be here for hours if we go through it division by division and in great detail, but notwithstanding that, we're certainly happy to entertain any questions that you have at the end of the presentation. We will also talk about next steps. So with that, we're here because the city issued an RFP in December of 2018. You were looking for a state-of-the-art, modern, comprehensive, legally defensive, and user-friendly zoning ordinance. And so after a process, we were very fortunate to be selected by the City of Kingman to do this work with you. And we started the work officially, it's hard to imagine now, but back in July of last year, when things were so very different for us. As a firm, Lisa Wise Consulting's been, was founded in 2016. We're a small firm with offices in California. I actually work from my home here in Sedona. And while we're a small firm, we have tremendous depth in the knowledge that we bring, because many of the team have degrees that range from planning through architecture to environmental studies and economics and so on. Lisa, the principal and founder of the, of the firm, has a master's degree in planning and a master's degree as a chartered accountant. And so her firm really does bring together planning skills and economic skills. Now, while we're not doing a lot of economic work with, with you all, it's certainly a very large part of our portfolio. We've done a lot of zoning codes, and we're really pleased to add a blue dot for Kingman on our, on our map for Arizona. Most of our work has been in, in Arizona, in California. We're now fortunate to be doing a little bit of international work too, so that's really exciting. So why did we launch this effort to update the city's existing zoning code? Well, it's been fascinating talking to the staff over the last year or more, just learning about how difficult the code is to use. We certainly heard that through the stakeholder interviews when I met some of you. And the code has been amended over 290 times since it was first adopted in 1971, and that clearly just tells you there's something wrong. And the city has processed by now perhaps over 516 different zone change applications, so that really is extraordinary, and it led the city to understand that a rework of the code was required. So we started off, as I mentioned, back in July with our kickoff and stakeholder interviews. The first major portion of work was the zoning ordinance audit and recommendations update, which we completed in September. We did a public workshop in late September, early October of last year. And then we've been working over the last few months compiling the administrative draft that staff comprehensively reviewed, and truly a shout out to all of them. They spent a lot of time working through the draft and really helped us create the public review draft that we'll discuss this evening. And then from now, moving into the future months, we've got Historic Preservation Commission meeting coming up in early November, Planning Commission meeting, public hearing in mid-November, and then into 2021 City Council hearings for adoption. So a key component of getting the work underway was to do the ordinance audit and recommendations report. What's working in your code? What isn't working so well? What's missing? And we found that the code generally could be summarized, as you see in those adjectives and highlighted in the red box. Inconsistent, complicated, confusing, imprecise, disorganized, antiquated, disjointed, and unpredictable. So the goal of the code update then is to turn all of those around, to involve Kingman residents, to make sure that we're effectively implementing the general plan, and that we answer all the questions that were posed to us in the RFP for a consistent, user-friendly, concise, integrated, contemporary, innovative, predictable zoning code. So let's pause for a moment and just think about the code public review draft itself. So one of the key things, I remember talking to Gary Kellogg at the time, Community Development Director and so there, really important to make sure that the new zoning code implements the general plan. So we've not done this work in a vacuum. We've gone back to the general plan every once in a while and make sure we're on track, and here are some of the primary goals that we think the new public review draft addresses. So let's start with the table of contents, and then I'll hand off to Adam. So your current table of contents is highlighted on the left. And if you study it, you'll see that it doesn't really have much of a logical organization. While it's good to start with the rules and definitions, there's no explanation of what Section 1 is, which is actually the title and purpose and intent of the code, also a good thing. Breaks down into some of the zones, but between the residential zones and the commercial zones, landscaping pops in there. Then you come down into some of the overlay zones, then the industrial zones, and it really starts to break down there, because it's just a single linear list of different topics. The new code is broken up into different titles, and then into different divisions, and each title, for example, as you can see here, Title 1 is the title, purpose, and the jurisdiction. And then we have a distinctly new title, too, for administration and procedures. And you can see how it's broken down by division in bold and section below that. So the idea is to make it as easy as possible for anybody, a professional planner, staff, planning commission council, lay member of the public to pick it up and find what they're looking for. And as you can see in this image on the far right, we've tried to, as much as we can, organize tables and lists in alphabetical order. Again, that just helps to make the code more user-friendly. So with that, I just wanted to summarize the six major titles, and then Adam will take us through the first four. So Title 1, purpose and jurisdiction. It sets the legal framework for the code. Title 2 is everything to do with how the code is administered, who does the administration, all the procedures for permits and various approvals. The zones are all clustered into Title 3. The residential, commercial, industrial, recreation, planned development, transect zones are all in that title. Title 4 then is where you'll find landscaping, lighting, outdoor lighting, architectural design standards, and so on. The definitions, I think, is pretty self-explanatory, and then we've added a new title, maps, so that all the maps that we refer to in the code, like the Kingman Design Review Overlay map, are included in that title. And then the appendices at the end are not actually a set of regulations, so they don't necessarily need to be adopted into the code. That means you can update the appendices without having to do a text amendment. And you, as Adam will explain later, you'll understand why. So with that, Adam, I'm gonna hand it off to you for Title 1.
Okay. Thanks, Roger. Hi, everybody. Good to see you again. And let me just preface by saying, if you hear a dog barking, it's my neighbor's dog. I apologize for that, but, so we'll get, we'll get started here with Title 1. Title, purpose and jurisdiction. So Title 1 establishes the legal authority of the zoning code to regulate land development in the city. So all the legal establishment language is housed in Title 1. So it's pretty simple and clear going forward. We can move to Title 2. So Title 2, placed near the beginning of the document, improves the overall flow for the reader. So all the procedures are in one spot, and creating essentially a one-stop shop for applicants to understand the approval processes that they have to go through, and then for city staff to administer those processes. As you can see to the right, there are gonna be more graphics to display the procedures. And as we move forward, there's simplified language for amendments to the code and to the zoning map itself. All the non-conforming provisions are in one place now, so non-conforming buildings, uses, lots, they're all in one place now for either the applicant to find or city staff to find. And then we also consolidated the variances section as well. So with that, we created a new section for annexation, and then we clarified the appeals section as well as the enforcement. So overall, clarifying this title is crucial to the functionality of this document for applicants, city staff, and boards and commissions as well. So Title 3 contains all the zoning districts and their relative regulations, and they're organized by land use, and all housed under one title. So we just introduced all the zones here and their relative zone symbols, and then we move into each land use type. So first we have residential, and we grouped all the zones by single-family, multifamily, manufactured housing, into these consolidated and clear tables here. So there are a few changes that we made based on, off the existing code, such as the R18 zone has been removed, and we combined the standards with the R16 zone. So this removal, it reduced redundancies in administering the code, and it didn't create any non-conformities. So us as LWC and city staff thought this was a good idea. And similarly, we added a new zone, the R15A, which is equivalent to the R2PDD, which was applied in an ad hoc manner. So we created some standards for this one zone rather than just applying the R2 to whenever it was necessary. So now we have a much clearer way forward for any of these new zones that apply to those standards. As, and in addition, we removed the factory-built residential zones, and overall cleaned up and simplified the standards going forward. So residential zones, we made the most changes, but with commercial zones, we rolled all the zones forward. We similarly put all the zones in tables, and the development standards in tables, and we consolidated and updated those. And then with industrial and recreational and open space zones, we did the same thing. All of them consolidated and simplified into tables, and no major changes to those either. So here's, here's one of the bigger changes that I'm sure everybody's aware of, is the transect zones for downtown. So they are form-based zones that prioritize the pedestrian experience in downtown and help making downtown more of that destination that everybody knows it is and wants it to be more. So this is best practice, and we established uses based on downtown. And what's key here is that the form of the buildings are the primary regulating factor. Use is still absolutely a consideration, but when creating and building off that existing form and character of downtown, we want that to be the primary factor going forward. But use is still a consideration in any development approval. So with the overlay zones and the planned development zones, we made some major changes here. So the, we have the Kingman Design Review Overlay, which replaced three existing design review overlays, which we'll touch on a little bit later. But this, the zone is housed in this section, and I'll speak about it a little bit more later. And what we did was with the planned development zones is we consolidated those into one table, as you can see here, and updated the procedures and provisions. And the major change here is that when someone wants to create a planned development zone, it follows the zone change process rather than the conditional use permit process, which is what happens today. Because essentially, when you're creating a planned development, it's a legislative act, just like a zone change is, so it needs to follow that same procedure. And as you can see here, the tables and development standards have been clarified and updated. And then we get to specific to uses here. So this houses all the uses that require those unique standards, and we put them all into one section. And similarly with the other sections, we use a lot of diagrams and images to illustrate these standards, as you can see in the bottom right-hand corner. And then we updated some of the uses and added new ones, so such as brew pub, which you have downtown, mixed-use, solar energy systems, tiny homes, and a few others as well. And as with most codes, we had to update the wireless facilities regulations to comply with federal law and to conform with best practice procedures. But then we have the supplemental standards. So I touched on the Kingman Design Review Overlay earlier. So in the existing code, we have the Bank Street Design Review Overlay District, the Walupi Mountain Road Area Plan, and the Walupi Mountain Road Area Plan Overlay District. So we took a comprehensive look at all three of these and found that they were largely the same in terms of their standards. So we combined all of them into one single overlay, and that's the Kingman Design Review Overlay. In addition to that, we created general site planning and architectural design standards for all new developments in the city outside of this Kingman Design Review Overlay. And then based on feedback from the planning commission and city council members, we created design standards for new subdivisions to make them more unique and break up the monotony of them. And as you can see here in the bottom right-hand corner, we have a new graphic for measuring building height, and we worked with city staff to develop a more clear way of measuring building height as well. So that, that's included in this section. And then we, we have separate sections for encroachments and fences, walls, and screening. As with all the other sections, we have very clear and understandable tables for these. And as you can see, there's new tables for sighting and height standards, and then standards for screening of mechanical equipment. All this falls, falls under the realm of best practices for, for codes. And then we have the landscaping section. So we, the focus here is to have standards that promote landscaping that is appropriate for the local climate and for water conservation practices, as well as best practice to have one table for the various plant types, size, and distribution. And we also included a new diagram for the site visibility triangle. So this is housed in the landscaping section, but it's applicable to many sections throughout the code, so it'll be referenced many times, so as it says there, parking and signs. So this is a very important new diagram to, to roll forward in the new code. And then similarly, we have outdoor lighting standards, which have been completely overhauled from, from the existing code. So light shielding standards, in order to promote the night sky in terms of not having too much light pollution in the city. We organized the lighting into different classes and types. All of them have comprehensive tables to cover each one. And then we have new special use categories for unique lighting types, such as parking garages and outdoor recreation facilities. And then we include an exemption section, such as the airport or emergency services that can't be held to these same, same standards due to their various natures. And then we have our parking and loading section. So we updated the required parking table to reflect the, the updated uses. So now all the parking is gonna be based on either units or gross floor area. And overall, we, we lowered the parking requirements for more development feasibility and flexibility. But that does not preclude a developer or an applicant to create as much parking as they feel is necessary for their use. But we just wanted to lower the baseline to provide a little bit more flexibility for applicants. So in addition, we approved the bicycle parking standards to promote more bicycle usage in the city. And then we created a new parking adjustment section to account for many things that happened on the ground, such as a shared parking scenario. And we wanted to create another layer of flexibility in there, so that developments weren't hampered by parking regulation.
I'll pick it up on signs, and you might recall that in our last work session, we spent a lot of time talking about the Reed v. Gilbert Supreme Court decision from 2006. Well, the sign section was one of those sections that actually required the greatest amount of, of work, and perhaps in many ways, more interaction with city staff, just to make sure that we're all on the same page with the desires of the city. So the sign standard section, like so much of the rest of the code, has been more logically structured and organized. We've ensured that the sign standards are content neutral, like you see in the top right-hand side of this image, rather than content-based. So the code no longer refers to political signs, or real estate signs, or shopping center signs. It's all based on time, place, and manner regulations to make them content neutral. We reorganized the sign code by establishing initially just the the intent, the purpose, and how the sign code is applied, and then broke out all the restrictions for signs based on their location. They may not be in the right of way, they can't be attached to poles, you can't put them on bridges and so on. And then display requirements, where those signs, how signs should be displayed in terms of their lighting, what may or may not be attached to them, and so on. And then we have the general requirements for all signs. How is sign area measured? How's height measured? And that varies based on the type of sign, and how are signs illuminated? And this is where we actually did upgrade the sign standards a lot to address, for example, electronic message centers or LED signs. Then we made a fundamental distinction, and this is a best practice post-read, to separate all permanent signs from all temporary signs. So the permanent signs are arranged by zoning district. And, you know, as you might pick up in the theme of this presentation, we have a table that shows what signs are allowed in each of the different types of zones. And then, once you've established that, we can then go and look at a separate series of tables and graphics that illustrate each sign type. So here's the awning sign, followed by, you know, canopy sign, or, you know, wall, wall sign and so on. So we've really tried to expand the number of options for signs. We worked closely with staff to make sure we calibrated the right standards for area and calculating how much signage was allowed. And we spent some time talking to some local representatives of the billboard industry to, so we could update the billboard section. We cross-referenced that back to Arizona revised statutes. The sign design guidelines are included in an appendix, so they're not a requirement, but they do provide sign designers and business owners with guidelines on what quality signage can look like. And then we broke out the temporary signs, and this was very important post-read. The fundamental distinction here is- The fundamental distinction here is that there are no permits for any type of temporary sign. So as you can see in the table on the right, whether it's an A-frame, a window sign, or different types of yard signs, no permit is allowed because, as we discussed with city staff, you don't want to get in the position of requiring a political candidate to get a permit to put up a sign or a Realtor to get a permit to put up signs on the property that they're selling. The only permit would be for a wall banner. Wall banners being much bigger, up to 30 square feet is what we've proposed. And because they're big and attached to a wall, they're unlikely to be able to be removed at the end of, and close of business. So they become a de facto wall sign, a de facto permanent sign. And so we'd limit the amount of time that the wall banner could be up. I don't remember what we put in there, but I think it's 30 or 45 days. And after that, code enforcement would ask for the signs to be removed. All other signs could be up for an unlimited period of time. And then we included updated provisions for sign walkers as required by statute and a severability section. And here you can see some of the different examples of, of yard signs with a photograph below each one of them, just to illustrate the different types. And this is proven now in many codes across the country as a useful tool of regulating temporary signs without getting into regulating the message. Adam.
Okay, so we're going to hop back into the, the zones here, specifically the transect zones. So what we have here are the frontage types. So frontages are a key feature of form-based zoning to enhance building design and to promote a pedestrian-friendly experience in a vibrant public realm. So these form-based frontage standards can be applied, will be applied in the transect zones and can be applied in all other zones. And the frontages are applied depending on ground floor uses. So for example, the dooryard would be for a residential building. The gallery, most likely for a commercial building. We have 10 frontage types, so they vary in terms of the, the types of ground floor uses that would be there. And then we have civic spaces. So civic spaces are also a, a key feature of form-based zoning to further.
Sorry, I've got a question real quick. I've seen transect quite a few times. I'm not sure what that is. Could you let us know what transect means?
Sure.
Adam, do you want to take it?
Sure, yeah. So we have the, Roger, I don't know if you want to back up to the, the map to help illustrate that.
Which map, Adam, sorry?
The map of downtown with the under title three for the transect zones. Oh, yeah. There we go. So you can see in the, the table in the upper right. So the transect is, is a way of regulating land use depending on intensity of development. So the higher, it goes from T1, which would be a natural area, to a T5 or a T6 would be more like your downtown environment. And this is best practices for all form-based zoning is based on the transect. So based on the level of development near downtown, it falls into this T4 and T5 area. So the T4 is more the, the neighborhood areas right outside of the downtown area. And then the T5 is the actual main street with higher intensity mixed-use buildings and that supports ground floor retail. So it's based off, these transect zones are based off this best practice of form-based zoning. And we worked with city staff to, to create this transect zone map of downtown based on the level of development that occurs in downtown. Roger, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
Commissioner Noble, if I can just put a slightly finer point on that. The transect actually comes from an ecological practice where if you just think about Kingman, the top, top of the, the mountains, just to the southeast of you, has a very different set of biology and biosomes than it does further down. When you get from the ponderosa trees down to the pineons, down to the desert. So I've described ecological transect. You can do the same thing across the city. From the most intense development, the downtown core, to the least intense out on the periphery. And what Adam has described here is the T5 general, because, oh, T5 Main Street becomes your most intense form of development, where the character of the development, they will be different to the T5 general or commercial type zones, but allowing for mixed use. Whereas the T4 neighborhood and T3 neighborhood have different characters of development too. Now, these are actually carefully calibrated to the underlying zoning. But the idea here is that different places require different regulations. And because downtown is so pedestrian-oriented, we wanted to promote that and ensure that your standards really did allow for more walkable frontages that provided shade, which is why we have the frontage standards that Adam described a little bit. Does that help understand that, Commissioner? Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so civic spaces are another form of, key feature of form-based zoning to further enhance the pedestrian experience and the public realm as a whole. So we standardize and promote the construction of public spaces in the transect zones and all other zones where, where they're desired, so they can be applied in all other districts. And we have five different types of civic spaces. So we see plaza, pocket plaza, we have playgrounds. So they're very familiar forms of public spaces and we have clear standards to, to dictate how they would be constructed. Okay, now moving to Title V, which is the, the definitions. So best practice is to consolidate all definitions into, to one title within the zoning code, rather than dispersing them throughout the various chapters. The definitions are organized by general terms, uses, and sign terms. And the definitions also include tables and diagrams, as you can see there. So it's a very, very clear and user-friendly title for anyone looking to define any of the terms in the code. And then we have Title VI, which covers, covers all the maps that are mentioned within the code. So we have the Historic District Overlay Map, the Interstate Corridor Overlay Map, and the Kingman Design Review Overlay Map, which we discussed earlier, and then the zoning map itself. So all of the maps are just housed under one title within the zoning map. Again, for a user-friendly experience for the applicant and just to make it very clear going forward. So we mentioned the appendices before. So we have five different appendices. And they all cover various aspects of the code. As you can see, appendix one is the planning fee schedule. So as Roger had mentioned before, if, if any fee had changed, for whatever reason, the code wouldn't need to be amended through a legislative act. It could just be updated within the appendices and inserted into the document itself online. So it makes it much, much easier for boards and commissions or city staff to update certain aspects, such as the plant material list, the sign design guidelines. And then we included an appendix on form-based coding to provide an introduction for people unfamiliar with it. So it's, it's about a two or three-page introduction to the various aspects of form-based coding to give everyone a sense of how these transect zones would function in the downtown and the city at large if they needed to be applied.
So with that, thank you for your attention, but we're moving now into the next step. So it's Public Review Draft will be available for public comment through October 30th. As I mentioned before, city staff and Carl Abrahart, one of our sub-consultants, will have a work session with the Historic Preservation Commission to talk about the future of the Historic Overlay District and the process that the city will need to go through in order to establish that district. That's on November 5th. At this point, we're looking at November 10th for the Planning Commission's public hearing on the Public Review Draft, with the option of, if needed, Mr. Chairman, continuing the meeting to another, another date if you need to have a second hearing on the, on the code. And then city council hearings scheduled sometime in January and February, with the final code hopefully completed and available in March. The effective date will be 30 days after the council's adoption. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, we decided it would be really fun to celebrate your success in getting a code adopted. So at whatever time that is next year, hopefully we can all gather and toast to a successful adoption of your code. So with that, Mr. Chairman, we're, Adam and I are available for any questions from the commission. I don't know if the public have opportunity to offer any commission's, but, questions, but we're here for you. Look forward to any discussion.
So Rod, Roger, on the Historic Overlay, does that follow under the T5 general? Now they're on Beale Street, or is that's a different?
So, Mr. Chairman, as you, as you may recall, the, the existing Historic Overlay District covers just a handful of blocks on the north side of Beale Street. And in working with city staff and with Carl, it's been acknowledged that there's a desire to expand that district. But in order to do so, we really need to go through an inventory process. And city staff are working with SHPO and Carl to secure a grant so that we can establish the integrity of the district through that process and then map the Historic Overlay District. Now, in an ideal world, it would be great if that district matches the transect zone form-based code district applied over downtown. But it may or may not do. We'll just have to see how the mapping process works out. We had hoped to do the Historic Overlay District as a part of this process, but unfortunately, the Historic Overlay District process has slowed down. So we'll move the zoning code forward. And then at such time as the funding falls into place, the work can be done, the Historic Overlay District will come back through Heritage Preservation, Historic Overlay, Historic Preservation Commission to you, ultimately to council.
All right, thank you, Roger.
Yeah, I have a question. This is Charmaine Keith. Can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, who, who, who was it that wanted this? I mean, I missed that. Who wanted this new code?
Well, the city staff put out a request for proposals asking for a new code. Money was assigned, so I'm going to look to Chris and Rich to, to assist here. But I would assume the city council, through the budget process, allocated the money. And ultimately, they were the decision-makers who said, yes, we need to update the zoning code.
And when you were going through that earlier, did you say, did, I might have misunderstood it, but did it say that it was, it was taken R1, was it, is this for the whole city?
Yes, this is, this, this. Yeah, this work that we've been doing, it's a really good question. Thank you for that. We're taking the, the existing zoning code and updating it, still applying it citywide. City staff will create the new zoning map. Many of the zones, as Adam explained, are carried forward. Some of them get renamed, so the mapping process will still continue. Nobody loses any entitlements to their property. There are no fundamental loss of development rights and development entitlements as a result of this work. But it is a comprehensive update of the zoning code as it applies across Kingman.
So I, when you were going through this, this is saying that there was eliminating R8, R18? Is that what it said?
We are combining R18 with R16, yes.
How do you combine that? How do you combine that?
The zoning map will be amended to reflect that change.
So an R18, so if it's R18 now, or, it would just go to what?
To R16, the same uses that are allowed, the same development entitles, entitlements.
The reason I am asking is because we have this come before us a lot where there are buffer zones. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of, there's a lot of buffer, there's buffer zones out there. And eliminating the R18 would create, make it a smaller density when the people that already came before us fighting that. So eliminating it would be just not serving the public.
I'm going to look to city staff to help me here because I'm not clear what the buffer zones are that the commission is referring to.
Buffer zones are when you have, when they create subdivision or a, a plan, a city plan or whatever, they have like R, like, like over there off Walpym Mountain Road, we have an R16. And then we have R20, or R, R2, 20,000 or whatever. So you have a 20,000 acre, 20,000 square foot minimum lot size on one. And then in the middle, you have an R10 hypothetically, and then you have R6. Well, the R10 is a buffer zone, so it's basically to not go from half a, half acre lots, per se, to tiny subdivision lots. And we just had this come before us where, you know, they, they don't want that. You know, they, that was created a certain way so that they wouldn't have small-density lots, homes in, in certain areas. And if we eliminate, if you're eliminating that, then it's all, the fight's over. I'm just saying, like, I don't understand the, the reasoning for getting rid of what, what, what are, the zoning that was already there. How, how does the code, how does this help us? How does changing these zones help the kid, the Kingman, the city of Kingman?
Charmaine, from my understanding, I don't, the, the R18 is getting taken out, but the size is still there. So what they're doing, instead of having a six and eight and so forth, they're just lumping together. It's not meaning that that square-footage lot isn't going to be there. It's just combined with R6 to, so we don't have a redundancy of all these lots sizes.
Right, but with that, though, they can go down to the 6,000 square foot. Just saying, you can, once, once there is no, once the zoning's been changed, you can make those lots smaller. I'm just making you aware, you can make those lots smaller now. And you can get more lots and buildable lots, right?
In, in an area that's undeveloped right now, that is R18, that would be true. You're correct, Charmaine.
And then we have light, lighting, remember, lighting problems and stuff? Remember, we, we were brought that before the commission was brought, that there wasn't enough streetlights for that zoning change, kids, more, more kids for schooling, busing, et cetera. So I, I just was just bringing that up, that, that's something that needs to be considered before they go through quickly passing the code.
In getting, getting back to the standards in the, in the, that will be in the new code, currently, there aren't really very many differences between R18 and R16, except for the size, the minimum lot size. Otherwise, it's exactly the same in terms of setbacks.
Correct.
There's things, but there is, but there is that, you're, you're correct, there is a difference in lot size. So, you know, it's, it's, it's something that's open for discussion with the commission and the council, whether there's interest in consolidating these districts or, or not. That's, that's a policy decision that the commission and council will have to weigh in on.
Gotcha. It's a lot to take in. I mean, it's not something you can quickly just go through. There's a lot of stuff on here to be, to go over, and so I'm saying.
Yeah, I certainly acknowledge that, Commissioner. You're absolutely right. We've been working on this for months and it's a lot for you all to absorb in a relatively short period of time. But, but if I can say this, and I'm, I'm pointing at your staff now, they've been tremendous to work with. They've worked hand-in-hand with us throughout this process. Use them as a resource. They will be able to answer your questions.
Any other further, further questions from any commission members?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. I guess first, Rich, do you have any comments on the presentation, anything? Because I'm sure that you've looked at it more in-depth than any of us have.
Well, all of us have. Myself, Gary, Sylvia, and Chris have all spent quite a bit of time going through the, the code. That's not to say there, there isn't reasons to, to question things and, and discuss it. But I, I think we feel fairly comfortable at this point that this is the code we're, we want to present to the public. That's the reason for the public comment period that we're going through right now. And then ultimately to, to you and then to the council. So, you know, it's good to get. So, you know, it's good to get the feedback. I would encourage everyone to review the code. It is on the city website. We also emailed it to you a few weeks ago. And please, please review it. Come up with your questions and your comments and get them to us. And we're going to go through a much more in-depth discussion at our next meeting in November.
Okay, so I have two questions, I guess, related to the item. Number one is the transect zones for the downtown area. What, I'm concerned adding restrictions to, you know, the existing zoning. And so I'm curious, what are you proposing as far as restrictions up in the downtown area?
Commissioner Noble, great question. And the only restriction we're adding is in terms of use. When we were talking about the transect zones in response to your question earlier, you might remember that I said we were tying the transect zones to the existing zones. So, for example, the C3 commercial zone now is going to be called along Beale Street, Route 66, the T5 Main Street. The T5 general is the next few blocks behind that. That's the equivalent of C2. And there's a very, very good reason for doing that. We didn't want to fall into the Proposition 207 trap, which is to make a land use law more restrictive. And you were very, we were very fortunate, we consultants in city, that the regulations for C2 and C3 were perfectly translatable into the transect zones for that area. So there's no diminution in property value through reducing setbacks or decreasing height or anything like that. But, and we have to be really clear here, and we've discussed this with staff and we've discussed this with city attorney, there are uses allowed in the C2 and C3 zone that really, if you're thinking about your downtown as this walkable place with lots of pedestrians and pedestrian activity and outdoor cafes like you have outside Ricketty Cricket and some of the other eating and drinking establishments in downtown, you don't want to have drive-through service or equipment rental yards or a truck service station. That just doesn't make sense in the downtown. So the only restriction is that certain uses would not be allowed in downtown. And we feel comfortable making that recommendation because the lot size is so small in downtown that nobody would want to do an automotive vehicle repair garage in your downtown. The land values are too high, there's no accessibility. It's not going to be a successful location for those kinds of businesses. So there are certain uses we're saying not appropriate in downtown, but the development standards remain the same. So there really is no more regulation. You're muted, so I can't hear you.
Is that better?
Yep.
My neighbor, he has, he actually has a car restoration building downtown that he operates out of. How would this affect him? And then, let's say, I have an office downtown and I want to add on to it. How would that affect me if I had an office downtown and wanted to not only remodel, but let's say add some square footage to it?
Any, any, any existing use like car repair would be considered non-conforming use and would be entitled to continue to use that facility in the downtown area. If you wanted to expand your building or in the downtown, subject to the standards, you can certainly expand it through, you know, whatever approval process the city finally adopts with the code. No reason to say that you couldn't expand it. Because remember, the regulations exist exactly the same as they are today under the current C3 or C2. So are the setbacks and all the other standards. So you're absolutely entitled to expand your building. What's important, though, is that because we're creating the pedestrian scaled walkable environment, we'd want you to apply a frontage type so that you can provide some shade on the sidewalk and make it more attractive. That ultimately, in the long run, and this has been proven many times, helps your building actually gain value. So there's really a benefit for yourself as a property owner, the pedestrians on the sidewalk, the city as a whole.
I guess I, I would have concerns for existing garages downtown that they would not be in compliance. So if if they needed to make changes to their facility or add on to their facility to continue operations, that this might affect their ability to do that and cause them to have to relocate.
Well, as long as they're a non-conforming use, they would certainly be entitled to continue their use. We'd have to go back in and look at the non-conforming section to see how much the building could be expanded under the expansion criteria. Off the top of my head, I don't remember. I could look it up here if you want the answer, or we can follow up after the fact. But they can certainly continue as a non-conforming use within the downtown transect zone.
As long as they don't want to make changes to their existing facility, correct?
To be, to be confirmed. As I say, I don't remember all the details.
Yeah, I think that there's quite a few buildings downtown that probably need to be looked at on a case-by-case basis before something like this is considered for approval. Okay, so my next question is related to the landscaping. What, what changes are you guys proposing to landscaping? The reason I'm asking is, I'm an engineer and I have quite a few clients. When we do a new site development, a lot of them don't want to put in nearly as many plants as the city currently requires. First off, for maintenance, but also just for the, you know, due to water conservation. Are, is the proposed landscaping, I guess, on the same level as the existing landscaping requirements? If it is, is there a possibility to maybe consider something, something else besides having to put shrubs and trees in? And I was just thinking of this when you guys were presenting this, maybe adding boulders or something like that in lieu of shrubs?
Adam, do you want to take this, sir?
Sure. Thank you for the question, Commissioner. Currently, we don't have boulders in there as an option, but it's certainly something that we can discuss going forward in terms of improvements to that section. But generally, there weren't massive shifts in the amounts of landscaping that would be required for developments. Just clarifying the types and more comprehensive use in terms of the size and the distribution going forward. So I can, I can point you to the table in the section of the code and see if that is, in terms of what you're looking for, of too much, too little, and we can kind of go from there. Because it kind of gets into the details on that point.
Okay. So one of the other things is, I think I heard you say that the, or maybe I saw it in here somewhere, that the maximum shrubbery height would be three feet. I don't know if you've driven around downtown, a lot of the time, or around town, a lot of times, you know, the shrubs, they end up being a lot larger than three feet. And so a lot of them do, they might be outside of the site triangle when they're planted. But due to their size and location and height, they do cause trouble with the site triangle, you know, in five, 10 years after, you know, a place has been developed.
Okay, that's good to know. We can, we can cross-reference the standards we have now and talk with city staff to see if there's a more appropriate maximum.
I guess maybe I'm saying reduce, right now, the city has quite a long list of trees and shrubs that you can plant. Maybe it, you know, could be reduced so that we, you know, have a really good idea of how high or what size those plants are going to be, you know, in 10 years.
Okay, we can take a look at that further.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just offer a comment?
Go ahead, Roger.
At staff's request, we prepared a summary table that compared your existing zoning code to the new zoning code. Chris, Rich, I don't know if you forwarded that to the commission, but it might help the commissioners in the review of the code so that they can track the existing code relative to the new one and understand the reasons why some of these decisions were made.
Yeah, I believe that was forward to the commission members, but if not, I mean, if they said again, I can certainly do that.
Anybody else have any further questions?
Not right now.
All right, just write, if you've got any questions, make notes, and we can discuss this at the next meeting. And I'd like to thank Roger and Adam for your presentation and bringing us up to date.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time, everybody. And please, you're welcome to reach out to us, reach out to staff. We're here in the long haul to help you with understanding the code. Thanks for your time this evening.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Right on to item five, announcement by commission members. Limited to announcements, availability, or attendance at conferences and seminars, requests for agenda items for future meetings, and requests for reports from staff. No discussion on any of these items. Does anybody have any comments or requests? I hear none. All right, item number six, adjournment. I need a motion for an adjournment.
I'll motion to adjourn.
I have a motion. I need a second.
I'll second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? I hear none. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Close? None? Thank you, everybody. Good seeing you again.
Thank you.
Bye, guys.